Two hundred and ninety ERUs of available capacity. Now, what is an ERU? It stands for an equivalent residential unit, or it's assumed to be enough water for one single family home. You could convert that also into commercial uses and multifamily, but it's a term used by the Department of Health. So roughly speaking, after meeting all of the buildout of SR one to two and the lodge expansion, the city has another two hundred and ninety homes that can add to the system. Other projects were also identified in that report that would increase the capacity of the city's water system. And we looked at that report, and I've had meetings with city staff, and we've done some analysis of that and determined that there are several projects that are going to naturally result in substantial additional water capacity over the next three to four years. I've listed them on this table, and we believe that these are foreseeable, and it's reasonable to assume that this additional capacity is going to occur within the next several years before this project is going to be at stake where it'll be ready for final plat approvals and for construction of the two of the phases. One of those projects is the Backwash Use Program, which the city's already funded. It's in construction, expected to be completed this year. And the benefits from that are going to be seen next year, which can actually be analyzed in the next Water System Plan update in 2018. That's projected to add two hundred and eighty-five ERUs of capacity. Another project is switching the irrigation water for Eagle Lake by providing, you know, right now it's getting three hundred and fifteen ERUs of drinking water from the city. And the city's plan shows that it intends eventually to replace that with non-potable water from Reformation. So that would be an additional three hundred and fifteen ERUs of capacity coming into the city in the near future. Fixing leaking pipes, replacing water mains is already funded by the city. These projects are expected to add another fifty to one hundred and seventy-five ERUs of capacity. The city has new rates in effect this year and cured rates. We know from past practice that this results in water conservation. People use less water. They don't think they can afford it, and that leads to more capacity for other projects. So we're expecting anywhere from a hundred to four hundred ERUs of additional capacity, just in response to rates that have been adjusted by the city already. Another project is the Peculation-Alice Lake Commitment. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with this. Part of the SR two project. The city responded to concerns by the Alice Lake community that their water supply might be impacted by St. Pauli Ridge. And so the city made a commitment that if that turned out to be the case, and the city would monitor that, and the city would replace that water supply in the system. So there's, in the GNO report, two hundred ERUs of capacity that aren't being used, but they're being reserved in case the city needs to own up to that commitment to Lake Alice. And we believe that that, those two hundred ERUs should come back into the availability column.
What do you say?
We believe.
Define "we."
Well, speaking about our team.
You want to take questions this time? Would you rather they write, just ask you to write a question down than answer?
I think that's a clear question.
Yeah, like I said, I'll defer to you.
I will take your question. And I do want to point out that unlike the other members of the team, I'm going to be out of town next Monday, so I won't be available to answer questions at your next meeting on this. I will be available on the fourteenth. So I, you know, I would like to take your questions tonight if you have them. As to, I'm just speaking about our team, you know, the judgments we've made in analyzing these things. It's my personal opinion that the nature of that commitment is one that is not going to obligate the city to engage any new net capacity. Because if it does end up serving the Alice Lake, the Lake Alice community, it can obtain that community's water rights and add them to its water rights and its capacity, so it would be an offset. So there should be no net impact to the city from that commitment. Therefore, I believe that those two hundred ERUs of capacity should come back into the available column. And that's something that the cities will look at when the Water System Plan is updated in 2018. That will get a good looking at. And at the end of that process, there'll be a better judgment about that question. Did I answer your question?
No.
I'm sorry.
Answer the big question with the please.
Our work for Holy Hill.
Is it Holy Hill Heights?
Yes.
Okay, this is not a city position? This is, you've taken city data and you've put positions in St. Pauli on?
Yes, that's true. And I've discussed it with city staff, and they've said that this is one of those questions that would be looked at when the Water System Plan is updated in 2018.
But a lot of this is from the city staff.
Yes, and these projects are identified in the Gray and Altona Report and in the city's Water System Plan. So these aren't marginal posts. These are naturally, these are city projects that are included in the unit. So again, while the capacity is committed in projects, we're looking at ending from twelve hundred and forty, fifteen hundred and forty-five additional ERUs of capacity in the next several years. That's more than enough for both the Mill Ventures Project and early phases of our project. And this capacity should be available before we get to the final plat stage of approval for this project. So we believe that we can demonstrate we're making appropriate provisions for water capacity for this project. By the way, the Mill Ventures Project has done very similar analysis in their post-annexation implementation plan. So we're not really putting anything new into this or any different kind of analysis. It's pretty standard water capacity analysis that we're providing. Even if all of those projects don't come to fruition, if there's something less than what we projected as additional capacity, the city has new water right applications pending with the Department of Ecology that I believe have a very strong likelihood of getting approved. They're not simple applications anymore. I'm very familiar with water rights and how difficult they are to obtain in the state today. But I represented the city of North Bend and was their project leader for obtaining their new water rights in 2007. And this process is very similar to the one that we went through in North Bend. And I'm very familiar with the groundwater, surface water interaction and with the players in this area in water resources, I think. You know, the city puts adequate resources into obtaining a mitigation supply. It'll get those water rights. And that will give the city enough water capacity, you know, in the four or five years and on into the future for all of the buildout projections for the city and urban growth area. So there's a backstop right here of additional water coming into the city, perhaps four or five years from now. The next question here I want to address is water availability. What standard do we have to meet in order for an annexation to be available? There really is no state law that says you have to have available water capacity before you can approve an annexation. The standard under the Growth Management Act is that appropriate provisions for water supply have to be made. And that's been interpreted by the Supreme Court in the Jay-Z Knight versus Yellen case. You've probably heard of Jay-Z Knight before. She's a litigator in the water rights arena. We've had a significant Supreme Court decision involving water capacity. The Supreme Court in that case decided it's at the final plat stage when that water capacity has to be proven and available before the final plat is approved. Until then, we're really just looking at, is this a reasonable plan that that capacity is going to be available at that time? Until then, I would also point out the risk is really on the developer because they're not going to get that main use entitlement that would give them a right to that capacity if the capacity isn't there. So we don't believe that the city's going to incur any risk by approving annexation at this point in time. There are existing water service policies adopted by the city that are consistent with the expansion of its capacity in the manner in which I outlined on the floor during the table. The city has policies that favor water conservation, that favor obtaining and moving towards additional water capacity to serve not only the existing boundaries, but also the urban growth area. These adopted policies are places that the city has already given a lot of thought to and adopted as their plan for the future. So, you know, we're not asking for anything different than the policy implementation that we're already adopting. We think that you're already on the road. Before we come up to the black back here, you're already on the road to obtaining that additional capacity without impacting other properties in the city. Finally, just, what are some of the benefits of annexation in terms of water capacity? Beyond just the opportunity for the plan development consistent with public involvement in the city's comprehensive plans, the project proponents would be supporting the city's water right application and its water system update, providing any additional resources or experience that the city would ask for. I've made my experience in water rights available to the city if they'd want it. And as I mentioned, I was successful in getting a very large water right approved recently for the city of North Bend. The project proponents would also be supporting the city's rates and its GFCs, and payment of those would be a substantial figure, maybe excess of twenty million dollars, that would be providing added funding to increase the capacity of the city's water system and taking that burden off of other property owners. Finally, we believe that the contributions that this project would make towards.
Just because of, yeah, I know why it's, I can't remember the words. I'm sorry, I just call it out, that GFCs.
Oh, good, thank you for bringing that up, Neil. A GFC is a general facility charge. It's in addition to rates that you pay for the consumption of water, a GFC is something that is paid at the times of development. It's in the ten thousand dollar range per unit that pays the city for the capacity of its system that that new use would be using.
To assure that new developments pay for its proportional share of the investment pool.
Exactly.
Is that the same thing as an impact fee?
It's similar to an impact fee, but it's actually done through the utility. So part of the utility service policy.
Same in principle, but dedicated to this utility.
It's dedicated to utility. The money would go into an account that pays for water capacity improvements that increase the capacity of the system for new growth. So in response to your comment, growth pays for growth. I think you said two years. Can I, can I field any other questions for you at my desk tonight? Thank you very much.
We, so thank you, Tom, for that description of water availability. I think that's, I know that that has been on council's mind. We know that it's a very important consideration. And of course, we know that it is incumbent on Congress developers to ensure that that water is available when we're ready and we need to develop. That is a type of framework in the address of the annexation agreement to make sure the city recognizes that it is not bearing the risk of any uncertainty going forward regarding the water capacity. So with that then, I think we'd like to turn to transportation. And I'd like to call Kevin Jones from Transport Group.
What do you mean? My name's Kevin Jones. I'm a first-class trade agent. Licensed professional here in the state of Washington. I have roughly four years' experience in the transportation planning and traffic area.
We can't hear you.
Transport Group has experience, who is very familiar with.
Excuse me, sorry. Did we turn on the speakers in the lobby?
I think he's working on it.
All right, continue, sir, please. Pull the mic away close, if you could.
So I was saying that Transport Group has experience in the city of St. Pauli. We were actually retained by the city to review the traffic impact assessments for the initial phases of St. Pauli Ridge, which gave us a sound understanding of the roadway network. We also have quite good experience working on age-qualified developments locally. I've worked specifically on both the Trilogy of Redmond Ridge project as well as Trilogy of Tahale, which is down in Pierce County. So tonight, I just want to speak briefly on transportation mobility. I thought it would be helpful to talk on the supply side of the ledger as well as the demand side. When I say supply, what I'm speaking to is the improvements that are anticipated with the new roadway network through the annexation area as well as the plan improvements. And then on the demand side, I'll be speaking about the amount of traffic that this development, that this proposal would like to generate and compare that amount of traffic to what was estimated and contemplated in the city's comp plan. So starting with the roadway network, this is a slide that Eric was speaking to previously. And really what this annexation provides is, in my mind, missing connectivity in several different directions. We talked about an alignment to the north up to St. Pauli Parkway via Fisher or an alternative. We talked about a connection to the west via Douglas. And there's also the possibility of one or more connections to the east. The northerly one would line with Southeast Adia Street. There was a question about the southern connection. That would align roughly with Southeast eighty-sixth Street. What's exciting about this concept, and it's identified in your comp plan, the transportational element of your comp plan, is this combination of properties allows for additional roadway connections through the city that don't exist today. The Parkway is the primary east-west route, for example. And with this annexation, it provides and facilitates the opportunity for a new east-west connection, which would extend from Douglas, beginning with at the Parkway, through Douglas, through the properties, and then either over to Adia to Old Town or eighty-sixth. So that's an opportunity as well as a potential connection, providing north-south travel. In fact, if you look at the map here, it shows the connection to the Parkway via Fisher through the property. And then ultimately, as you make your way east, there is opportunity to continue those connections as contemplated in the transportation element down to North Bend Way. So it's an additional north-south connection that doesn't exist today. And there's really some advantages that those new routes would provide. In fact, the comp plan, just to quote from it real briefly, this would really be an implementation of that comp plan's vision and plan. In fact, quote, "New roads in the UGA would provide additional connections between St. Pauli Parkway, State Route two oh two, and other existing arterials and collectors." This is really the realization of that. So what's the benefits? I mean, it's perhaps somewhat intuitive, but, you know, connectivity is an important thing when it comes to transportation. And connectivity really benefits both existing and future traffic. So from an existing traffic standpoint, you have the introduction of alternative routes that don't exist today, and that gives people choices to maybe make a different travel path. When it comes to future traffic, something along these lines with this degree of connectivity does a real good job of diffusing and dispersing future traffic, so it's not as concentrated in any one location, including the Parkway itself. This improved roadway network would actually reduce the concentration and demand on St. Pauli Parkway. And this is evidenced by the transportation element and the modeling that the city's consultants did. They illustrated that with this roadway connection, there'd be less traffic on the Parkway. And because of that reduction in traffic, the comprehensive plan demonstrates that all signalized intersections in future year 2032 would actually operate well within the city's operational standards. Up and down the Parkway until you get to the I ninety interchange, which was identified as a problem location in need of improvement. Andy was speaking about that a little bit earlier, and I want to touch on that major, major project as well because that's a fully funded, committed project that the state has dedicated a hundred and fifty million dollars to. This would be for design, construction, the whole show. And there was a recent acceleration of schedule. So based on recent correspondence with Washita, we were told that in mid-August, so in less than a month, they're going to go to ad, and they're going to advertise for a consultant team to hire to begin a design effort. And then the design effort would begin, and when you look at the project as a whole, given its size and scale, it's likely going to be a four- or five-year build schedule. And so as Andy was mentioning, Washita is currently projecting a buildout of that new interchange, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, those are the rough timeframes. That's important when you compare that improvement, that critical improvement, to the timeframe of this project through the annexation process. Because what that means is the interchange would be improved and open to all this future traffic right about the time that the first phase of St. Pauli Heights would begin being occupied. And probably five to ten years before, St. Pauli Heights would even be built out. So it really is a good alignment of timing from a traffic demand standpoint. And it's an important plan improver. The last thing I want to touch on is the traffic generation. So this project is going to generate traffic, no doubt about it. However, that traffic is projected to be less than what was envisioned and studied as part of the comprehensive plan. And why is that? Well, for two primary reasons. The first is the fact that what's being proposed is predominantly the senior adult housing or age-qualified housing. And that is different than what was envisioned and studied as part of the comp plan. The comp plan was more traditional, single-family, multifamily housing. The other big difference is the employment side. This project is proposing roughly a fifth, or is estimating there'd be maybe a fifth, the number of employees, as was envisioned or estimated as part of the comp plan. So you have fewer employees, you have a different mix of housing types, and collectively, we found that it would generate less peak hour traffic during that afternoon time period, the afternoon or what's commonly referred to as the PM peak hour. There's a memo, I'm told, in your packets that I put together, just a simple two-page memo where I walk through the calculations and I compare what was estimated in the comprehensive plan for these particular parcels. And I compare that to what St. Pauli Heights and its envisioned development plan would generate. And I demonstrate that in this particular case, what's before you today or what was envisioned as part of this annexation would generate less peak hour traffic comparatively. Which is a good thing, you got more supply coming online, and you have a project and proposal that would generate less traffic. So some might ask, well, what's your evidence that a age-qualified or senior housing project would generate less traffic than more traditional housing? And, you know, that's a good question. But what's found through the studies is that when you look at demographics in these age-qualified, you're starting at age fifty-five and growing up to eighty, eighty-five, sometimes even older. And what you find is that in that demographic, you tend to have a lower proportion, I'm sorry, a higher proportion of the empty nesters compared to more traditional housing. You have a lower proportion of full-time workers. But what this does is it provides folks that live in this community, it gives them a little bit more choice than the rest of us have when it comes to time of day and making their travel. Doesn't mean that they're not going to be driving. They will be driving to cars. It's just that they often will choose to drive during the non-peak hours to avoid the congestion, to avoid the delay at intersections. And as such, what we found through national studies as well as local studies is that the average trip rate for these senior adult housing, when compared to the comp plan estimates, for example, were roughly half. Half the trip rate. This again is during the afternoon peak hour, which is the time period of greatest congestion on St. Pauli roads and intersections. So I talked about these studies. So in traffic engineering, there's a manual that is the industry standard when trying to estimate future traffic based on different land uses. It's called the Trip Generation Manual. It's commonly referenced, and it does have a category, a land use category, to describe the senior adult housing. There's a total of thirty-four studies in this national publication. Every single study found that, on average, these senior adult housing developments generated less PM peak hour traffic compared to the more traditional. There wasn't one development, existing development that was studied that suggested otherwise. That doesn't surprise me. That actually is quite intuitive, given just the demographics and individual's choice of travel behaviors and time of day. But it's been proven out, and likewise, I mentioned earlier, my experience with a couple of local age-qualified projects, Trilogy of Redmond Ridge, Trilogy of Tahale. And we've done some studies, trip generation studies, for those local developments, and sure enough, the same thing holds. So there's a lot of evidence behind and data behind that assumption in this particular analysis that a senior adult housing project would generate less traffic on the highway than a more traditional one. So then lastly, there's this slide. This is also represented on page two of your memo. But what this attempts to do is to illustrate graphically how this proposal's traffic generation compares to what was contemplated in the comp plan. So the comp plan for these particular zones estimated nearly six hundred weekday PM peak hour trips. If you looked at the far right-hand side, you'll look at buildout, which we're estimating at roughly year 2032, which is the same buildout year, the same future year that was studied as part of the comprehensive plan. And what we're showing is at buildout of this project, the project would generate just under four hundred and sixty PM peak hour trips. So that's a delta, approximately a hundred and twenty-five PM peak hour trips. The other thing that's important that this graphic illustrates is that those four hundred and fifty-eight trips will not appear on the roadway network day one. As Andy's mentioned, it's probably a three-phase project. Would be built over seven, eight, potentially ten years. And so what we did here graphically was trying to illustrate, with the first year being twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two roughly, the introduction of some new traffic as homes are built and occupy. And then that number gradually increasing over time, but capping out at buildout at four hundred and fifty-eight. The other thing that I think this graphic does a good job illustrating is if you look below, there's the identification of the time period in which the I ninety and State Route eighteen interchange would be improved. I mentioned design beginning this year with completion by year 2022, 2023. So that time period is on the far left-hand side of that timetable, and demonstrates that there's a lot of time for that project to be built. But this project, as before you released the annexation proposal, would not be generating much traffic within that time period, primarily given the schedule that Andy laid out. So with that, I guess I'll conclude and invite you to ask questions at the completion of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I understand that we are running up to our hour. We do have one more substantive topic to address for council, and that is the fiscal analysis that was done. So I think it's important to hear that. But Morgan Shook with Echo Northwest has agreed to try and speed up the presentation.
I'll keep up the dual task of being brief and lively at the same time. So I'm Morgan Shook. I'm the director at the economics planning firm, Echo Northwest. We have a deep specialization in public finance. Myself, I have done half a dozen large-scale annexation studies, mostly on the behalf of cities. Most recently, Kirkland, Maryland, and the city of Lingwood back when the state was pushing this, still, I should say, this part of annexation of large unincorporated areas and urban areas. So what we have here is a proposal to invest roughly six hundred and fifty million dollars in construction of housing and new infrastructure. And that includes all the infrastructure that would be required.
And that includes all the infrastructure that would be required as part of the development, both the onsite pieces as well as into the offsite mitigation. We're roughly estimating about $5 to $7 million to cover traffic lights and bridges and other things that might be identified in the environmental impact plan statement work. So the question then is sort of how does this sort of change sort of both the regional sort of the economic equilibrium, as well as sort of the, more practically, the city's bottom line? And so the first part of that, right, the economic activity really comes in two places. The first one is the direct investment in the infrastructure and housing, as well as sort of the occupation, and secondarily, the occupation of those houses by folks 55+ plus. So there we would expect that investment to support jobs, households, and increased spending, and then ultimately, for a lot of that spending to be sort of reflected in the city's bottom line, in which I'll direct most of my comments here. So when we do these annexation analyses for council, they all have kind of openly the same question to us. Over the long term, does this make our job easier or harder in terms of balancing the budget? And so our perspective here is really looking at that. What are the marginal or new revenue that the city would collect as a consequence of annexation to the construction of these buildings and occupation of them? And what would be the new marginal costs that would be required to serve the people living in those structures? So our analysis here shows that, given the nature of the investment, as well as the nature of the folks who are living in those places, there are a strong probability, likelihood that the project will generate large fiscal surpluses to the city. And all of that is in a little more detail. So, so how does the project sort of impact your tax revenue base? And it really does this in three pieces. The first one is the city really benefits from the taxation of construction as a taxable activity. So during the ramp-up period here during construction, that, six, oh, we're estimating roughly about $500 million in construction of new housing and infrastructure would be taxable. The second big way that the city grows its tax-based revenue is the inclusion of new add-on, new construction add-on value that allows the city to grow its property tax collections above 1%. So, so this is a quirk of Washington sort of public finance and property tax, but basically, you can kind of grow yourself out of the limitations that the 1% limit places on cities. And then the third way that this grows is basically the occupation of those structures due to both sales tax sourcing laws, so the broadships and retail from e-commerce, I'm sorry, from brick-and-mortar to e-commerce, households themselves become big generators of sales tax revenues for cities, as well as just basically those folks living in those houses and wanting to shop locally. The project is situated really close to the commercial area, just-